If I can have your attention, it's 5:30 and we're going to call to order the meeting for the Board of Education. And the first item up is Ms. Walker is going to lead us in the...
If y'all would please stand.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Pete is going to read our mission statement for us tonight.
The mission of the Beaufort County Schools team is to enhance the parcel of life without constraints by nurturing all students and educating them to the fullest potential.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comments? Okay, no one signed up for public comments, so we'll move on. Next item up would be approval of the agenda. Any additions, deletions, is everything good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, everybody had a chance to look over it on the computers, okay? I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Okay, we have an agenda. And that occurs to our minutes. You'll click on those, I think there's several sets, but I'm sure everybody's had a chance. Yeah, there's several sets on here. A lot of meetings been going on this month. You've probably had a chance to look over those, so what's the pleasure?
I'm going to tell myself from April the 12th.
Okay. Make a notation of that, Lisa. Okay. Okay. All right. Any questions about the minutes?
Ms. Williams?
And I have to do April the 12th.
April the 12th for Barbara? Okay. Okay, anyone else? If not...
Move approval.
Okay, I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose to that? Okay, minutes are approved. And that would take us to the Character Education Awards, or all the awards actually. And Mrs. Williams is going to, I believe, help with Nicole tonight, and so I'll turn it over to the two of them.
Good evening. The character trait that was recognized in our schools for the month of April was good judgment. The nominees at the elementary level were from Bath Elementary, Morelli Resendez; from Chaco Winnity Middle, Autumn Burris; from Chaco Winnity Primary, DeAndre Blunt; from Eastern Elementary, Paige Brown; from John Cotton Taylor, Paris Rogers; from John Small, Juan Ramirez; from Northeast Elementary, Jack DeHugue; and from S.W. Snowden, Tristan Blunt, and Ijeane Smith. And the winner at the elementary level was DeAndre Blunt, if he will come forward. DeAndre is a third grader at Chaco Winnity Primary. His mother is Ms. Sharon Hopkins, if she will stand. And he was presented by his teacher, Mrs. Swain, if she's present, if she will stand as well.
Ms. Whittington.
Ms. Whittington, okay. Sorry. Ms. Whittington. And Ms. Whittington wrote, "DeAndre Blunt is a well-mannered and respectful individual that displays good judgment on a daily basis. In the classroom, DeAndre tries hard to monitor his behavior and make good choices even when no one is looking. He understands the importance of working hard in order to maximize his learning and makes wise decisions in regards to his work habits. One particular example of how DeAndre used good judgment was at a recent field trip our third graders attended at Simply Natural Creamery in Aiden, North Carolina. After touring the facility, students were treated to ice cream from the creamery. As expected of children at ice cream, most students immediately began trying to grab the ice cream before our tour guide even started passing out the treat. Not only did DeAndre use his manners and not reach out for his ice cream, but he encouraged the other students to get in a straight line and wait their turn. Then he politely told our tour guide that he should really let the ladies go first." Our guide was so impressed with his manners that he thanked DeAndre for that reminder and ended up treating him to an extra ice cream. I was so proud that DeAndre used good judgment without being prompted or even knowing that I was observing him. He represented himself, me as his teacher, our class, and Chaco Winnity Primary School well outside of the school environment. I believe we should also...I believe he would also represent Beaufort County Schools well if selected as this month's Character Education Representative for Good Judgment. We say congratulations to DeAndre.
Good job, DeAndre. Keep up the good work.
Great. Good job. Keep up the strength.
Thank you.
Everybody's following, right?
Good job. Good job.
Kick the cane.
Ain't nobody beat it.
Don't start cutting up.
Better than kicking the butter. You ain't kidding.
You got your fools down.
For sure. This guy mad or something?
At the middle school level, the nominees were from Bath Elementary...I'm sorry, from Chaco Winnity Middle, Tanner Rouse; from Northeast Elementary, Emily Smith; from P.S. Jones, Bentley Commander; and from S.W. Snowden, Kanye Midget. And the winner at the middle school level was Bentley Commander, if he will come forward. Bentley is a sixth grader at P.S. Jones. His parents are Jessica Mizell and James Commander, if they will stand. And he was presented by his teacher, Mrs. Lincoln, if she's here, she will stand as well. And she wrote, "It has been said by many people that good judgment comes from experience and a lot of that experience comes from bad judgment." Says Bentley is a student that sometimes had difficulty in my class. I have him first thing in the morning and often it takes him a while to get going. At first, he wasn't always participating in class like he should. I have talked to Bentley and his dad about his motivation and I have seen a definite change. Bentley now separates himself from others that distract him and he also listens and participates during class. He has decided to come see me for tutoring after school some days and has started completing all of his homework on time. Bentley, I believe, has learned from his experience of making poor school decisions that is much wiser to make good judgment calls in class and at home in order to have a good school at...a good attitude and excel in school. Mrs. Parker even noticed his change in attitude and asked me, "How's Bentley doing in your class?" I am very proud of Bentley and his decision to start making good judgment calls in class and at home in order to have a good school attitude and excel in school. We say congratulations.
Does that break something? I think when you press the little pedal, you know, they lock them up. Through what? Do what?
I didn't pay you five dollars for your laptop. I really won't.
At the high school level, the nominees were from Northside High School, Holly Latham; from Washington High School, Mrs. Huntington's class; and from Southside High School, Savannah Boyd. And the winner at the high school level was Mrs. Huntington's entire third-period class from Washington High School. Those students are in grades nine through 10 and they were nominated by Mrs. Huntington. If she's here, she will stand. And I'm going to call the names of the students and if you are here, if you will come forward. Natasha Bailey; Devin Blunt; Brianna Bright; Gregory Bryant; Mitchell Cobb; Monita Cooper; Christian De La Rosa Montero; Caleb Kite; Michaela Lawrence; Deja Marizio; Dakota Morris; Ofelia Matut; Lidi Ramirez Juarez; Araceli Trejo Cota; and Malia Wilder. And Mrs. Huntington wrote, "I cannot nominate just one student and the reason being is I was in class one day and did not feel well. My students came in for third period. They asked me if I was all right and they told me that I said yes. They then asked, 'Do we need to get someone?' And I replied, 'Yes.' They went and got help for their teacher. The students were taken to another classroom and I was told that they did very well and worked on their assignment. These students are my lifesavers. They showed good judgment in all that they did in class that day and I am so proud of them." We say congratulations to all of you.
Can we get our other winners to come up with your certificates?
That would be a heck of a picture. It's going to be a nice picture.
This time we'd like to recognize the Beaufort County Schools Clean School Award winner for April 2016. And no stranger to this award, Chaco Winnity Middle School, the perfect score of 100 percent. I'd like to ask Carlton Robertson, the head custodian, Serena Gibbs, and Kedrick Daly to come up if they would.
Good job, Carlton. Serena.
You've worked so much, I might need a loan.
I'm telling.
Great job. Thank you.
Hey, you got this thing down.
That's right. I think we need to have them start letting them just announce.
Well, that's really an investigation.
Things and all their winnings to...
They aren't official. Good job, guys.
We also like to recognize the schools that have a 95% or higher for honorable mention each month. And for this month, Southside High School was at 99.5; the EdTech Center at 99; Chaco Winnity Primary School, John Cotton Taylor Elementary; Eastern Elementary at 98; P.S. Jones Middle School and S.W. Snowden Elementary at 97; and Washington High School at 96. Let's give them a round of applause. Is that all the recognition?
Well, let me just say, we're very happy to have such a large crowd tonight, but something tells me you probably didn't come to see us. So, at this time, we're through with the recognition, we're going to take about a one-minute break. And if that's why you came and you would like to leave, now's a great time. Or you're welcome to stay for the really good stuff to come up. I guess it goes that way. She just handed me a packet. It's just mine or yours, too? It's not mine. It must be yours. I set mine behind me where I call it mine. It's here, I just barely get it out of the way. Where's Mark at? I don't know. I was noticing that during that entire bin, he slipped out and didn't make it back in. Mark. It was wrong, I was good. Oh, the twin, you don't even notice that. How old are they? I'm guessing about six, seven. Oh, yeah. That's about eight years. There he goes. We thought we'd lost you. Not lucky. I gave her a seat, it is.
We were trying.
That's what I said, we're not that lucky.
Okay, we good?
Marcus, time for the national anthem.
No, not yet. Okay, that's going to take us into, if I can have your attention, we're going to move now into the non-action part of our meeting. And if somebody, the last one out, closed the door. We're going to have a Bright Futures update, and I believe that would be Ms. McKeithen and Glover is going to come in, share some information with us. And welcome.
Thank you. We're going to be short. Can you hear me?
Sure. We're good.
There's nothing I can do about that. We obviously have had this partnership with Beaufort County Schools and Bright Futures and we have said, I think we were going to come back quarterly and just update you on what's going on so that you know what's been happening with Bright Futures in the Chamber of Commerce. We are still meeting the immediate needs through Nicole, and she does a great job of that, so that's still a piece of what we're doing with Bright Futures. But we're also doing site councils at the schools, and hopefully you've heard of those and we've talked about those in the past. But where we've seen a lot of growth with this program is through those site councils in the schools. And we have nine site councils set up right now out of the 13 schools. There are some that don't need them because they've got a lot going on already and there are some that obviously do. And so, we've had a lot of success with the site councils. And Robin's going to talk about those in a minute and just go over and highlight one thing from each school so that you know what we've been doing and kind of what has been happening at these meetings. A site council, if you don't know, is school representatives and business partners and faith-based partners and anybody else, citizens that want to be involved. And they meet kind of on their own schedule. A lot of them are monthly, a lot of them every other month. But it really is generated around what that school needs and what they feel like their students need. And so, we've been working with those nine site councils and a lot of really neat stuff has come out of those, and she's going to talk about that. And one thing was Eastern Elementary last night, just with an idea from someone that is at the school, is a teacher, and she sits on the site council and then all of a sudden a community event happens. And so, a lot's happened with that. And Robin's going to talk about that. And we know that these partnerships are really important for this program to be sustainable, not just the immediate needs, which we've been able to continue to do, but just the sustainability as in the site councils being in each school. So Robin's going to let you know a little bit more about what's going on as she's more involved in them day-to-day.
So, if y'all don't know, Eastern Elementary had a family movie night last night at Festival Park and Finding Nemo was shown, and there were hundreds of people. There's a picture in your packet. And it was just a great night, and that formed through a partnership through the site council, that at Beaufort Hospital and other partners in the community, and it was just a great night. Butch was out there playing music. I saw Carolyn, there may have been others, but just a great positive atmosphere for staff and families, and it was just a great night for Beaufort County Schools. Snowden has one of the strongest site councils led by Barb Jones. They have over nine church partnerships, and they are...they're really kind of acting as a PTA for that school. They're doing things like meeting Angel Tree needs, collecting school supplies, box tops, drink tabs for the Ronald McDonald House. They can help coordinate a veterans breakfast. They raised over $240 during that coat drive. They gave back since they got the coats from Potash Corp. They raised...the kids raised money to give coats back to other kids at other schools, which was awesome. And then Barb Jones took some of those kids shopping and they bought coats to give to other kids. They're also going to help with the upcoming teacher appreciation and end-of-grade proctoring. P.S. Jones Middle School, thanks to the site council there, there have been about 25 at-risk male students identified and every Friday afternoon. There's a group at Beaufort County Community College called Men of Success, and they go out and play basketball every Friday afternoon with these at-risk kids. And those kids love it, they look forward to it every Friday afternoon. At Northeast Elementary, one of the things they have been giving at Christmas, they gave books to every student, and they're doing it again at the end of the year. And how that came about was at the site council. It was talked about that they'd love to send books home with students. And Vada at Bell Haven said, "We've got the money that we can pay for that," so that's how that happened. They're also planning and...and us planning the implementation of a sensory room, which is really cool. Chaco Winnity Middle School, through a partnership with Union Chapel, they have started the backpack program and that's going strong, and they've also had a clothing drive there. John Small School, we just formed the site council there, and the first thing that we're doing there is at Covenant Church, we're going to have a big family night cookout. They're going to have bouncy houses, music, and hot dogs, and that's being planned in May. Washington High School, there's information in your packet about that, but the food and hygiene pantry, that was started last year, and that ended up making national news. There's an article that was in the Huffington Post and People Magazine, and that's still going strong and meeting needs. And we get many calls, the school gets called, as well as the chamber, we get calls about how to...how we started that. And Southside High School, we just formed a site council there, and the thing they want is a food and hygiene pantry. And we've got students from the Key Club that are actually going to be involved and help us form that food and hygiene pantry. The EdTech, due to our site council Everett Hershey, Everett Hershey with Precision Pallets in Pantigo, he was able to get permission from Mr. Jackson to have some of the students at EdTech play basketball with the Teach Home School program. And that has been great for the EdTech students as well as the Teach kids. And they also have some EdTech students playing on the baseball team. So that's just been an awesome partnership. There have also been several motivational speakers brought in at EdTech, as well as a financial literacy class taught by Wesley Jones and Roy Parker that I went to, and I want my boys to go to that as well. We've also had...we did a countywide coat drive in the fall and gave out hundreds of coats to Beaufort County students. And the last thing is we received with the help of Michelle Oros, we wrote a grant through our foundation for Bright Futures de Wells Fargo. We received a $5,000 grant that's going to go toward the summer feed program. Last year, two years ago, through the summer feed program, I think 250 kids were fed. Last year, it went up to 500 kids. This year, we're hoping to feed, Michelle says hoping it expands to 1,000. And with this $5,000 grant, we're going to be able to buy those Cambro units to store the food, to keep it hot, to be able to deliver it to the sites. So, that's it. The only other thing in your packet is just a list of the meetings, the Bright Futures meetings. So, do y'all have any questions for either one of us?
If there's any questions, anybody got any comments?
No comments.
I'd just say wow.
Thank you.
I'm assuming they found Nemo?
I think so. I think so.
I've seen that a few times.
It was a beautiful night. It could not have been...it could not have been better.
There were enough people there looking at him. I don't have to...
He was at 42 Wildaby Way, Sydney. With P. Sherman.
Thank you for all you're doing. This is wonderful.
Really. And thank you for coming in and sharing it so that the public can hear. I mean, we hear a lot of these things, but it's great for the rest of everyone to see what's going on. The work is just unbelievable. Y'all guys are so invaluable. It's amazing.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. I feel like I want to clap or something. That would take us to a social media safety presentation, and I think Ms. Wood from Northside is going to be sharing that information with us. Yeah, I think it's going to be behind me, so I'm going to get up and move. Is that...
It is. We can play the video first if you'd like.
Either way you like it, your show.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Oliver and I'm a student here at Northside High School, and I'm here today to talk to you about cyber safety. In today's world, technology is all around us and has connected people from all around the world. Today, 64% of teens post photos or videos of themselves online while more than half post info about where they live. This can be very dangerous because once you post personal information on the internet, it is there forever and for anyone to see. Child predators and pedophiles often stalk children and teens by using their social media websites and often act as if they are the same age as a child so that they will talk to them if returned. 23% of children have had an encounter with a stranger on the internet, including 7% of the children who reported having met someone in the real world from the internet. 69% of teens regularly receive personal messages online from people they don't know, and most of them don't tell a trusted adult about it.
Who are you talking to? Oh, just my new boyfriend. Boyfriend? How long have you been dating him? Oh, like a month or... Why haven't we met him yet? Oh, you need to meet him today, like he's coming here like right now.
Technology is an amazing thing, but when not done safely, it can be very dangerous. 4% of children receive aggressive solicitations from adults who attempted to meet the children in person. Predators will use the internet and social media to try and contact children. Children and teens who are unaware of this danger can get into serious trouble. Let's take a look at what can happen when a teenager meets who she thinks is a guy that she has been talking to over the internet but is really a child predator. This reenactment shows just how dangerous an unknown online relationship can be. This child predator is claiming to be the father of the boy this girl has met online. He has sent her a text that says his father will be picking her up instead of him meeting her and her friends at school. Meeting someone you've only met online can be very dangerous and can have serious consequences. The most important thing to remember is if you ever meet anyone you met online in person, you should never do so alone. You should always do so with a group of friends or with an adult present. This message was sponsored by First South Bank and Tri-County Telecom, and I hope you have learned a lot about cyber s... and I hope you've learned a lot about cyber safety.
Well, I heard a little bit.
This particular video is a community service project this year for Tri-County Telecom. And it's created, it was created by a tremendous group of students. I'm extremely proud of them. We have been putting videos together and public service announcements together since 2002 and our goal is to eventually build a large program for graphic arts and film production. So that's it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me. Are there any questions?
Any comments? Anybody would like to make that question?
Great. Thank you very much.
Get some of our students involved in media still. I don't know if I said that right.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
I have the camera and all those things.
Do we know that young lady in the film there, Bo?
Yes.
Yeah, she looks familiar to me.
Some of those DJ qualities coming through.
I'm embarrassed to say, that's the first time I've seen the video. Very proud.
Yes.
Yeah. Great job. That was a class, that was a real class act right there. That was nice.
Well, we're on YouTube now.
Yeah, I was thinking they picked some, some of the right characters.
Some way to raise some fun.
Exactly.
A good action video.
Yeah. I wonder why.
Have this been shown, have this been shown at the school?
It has. We showed it at our Renaissance rally at the beginning of February to the students.
Okay. I need to go countywide.
Yep, I hope you're paying attention.
And not just the high schools. It needs to be...
Yes.
Okay.
They definitely need to pay attention to that, for sure.
Has there been any disastrous incidents in our...
I don't know if we've had any in our counties around the schools. Does anybody know? Not that I've heard of, but doesn't hurt to be proactive.
I'm sorry, I didn't need a question.
I'm sorry?
I didn't need a question.
I just wondered if there'd been any disastrous episodes in our county connected with that title.
Yeah. I definitely try to stay ahead of it.
Educate them real good.
Yep, stay ahead of it.
And young, start young.
I'd like to say, I'm gonna talk to the folks in Tri-County. I'd like to see them run that on their, on their cable network. It's a great public service.
Okay, we're gonna move into the action portion and the first item up is a capital update and Stan Hudson is gonna do that for us.
Click on it here. I see there's an attachment.
Good afternoon.
You want us to open up the first one, the update?
Yes, sir. Just a 1516 project in progress.
Got you.
Start off with Eastern Elementary. The building is basically enclosed now. The exterior is complete. They set the doors last Thursday afternoon. All the sheet rock is hung and they are finishing sheet rock and hoping to start sanding Monday, if not Saturday. Couldn't tell me whether the crew was gonna work. They scheduled Monday to start hanging the spiral duct overhead in the gym. That will be the last of the big projects in there.
So they're right on schedule, sounds right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
It's looking good. I went out today. Mr. Dana gave me a tour. Looks good.
It's coming along well and we have our monthly construction meeting tomorrow afternoon at 3:30 so I'll get a new update and schedule and at my next one I can tell you whether, where we at, but I think we're ahead of schedule.
Sounds like it.
I think they're ahead of schedule. Chaco Wendy Middle School, 100 building window replacement project. We're still waiting on the correct emergency windows. We're expecting it at the end of next week for delivery and they said it would take about three hours to put them all in. Southside track erosion. Actually, this has changed since I wrote this yesterday. They were here today. They started digging the ditch. They cut the trees back and they hauled about 15 loads of topsoil in today. So that project, they were a day earlier and they promised they got run out a week ago because of the water back there and it was too slick.
Stan.
Sir?
You said 15 loads, but how many loads? Tell them how many this is gonna take.
About 220.
Yeah, that's why I asked last time we had this update. I said, "Well, how they gonna get those trucks in there?" Because I know it's wet around.
They're coming on the bus in and they cut across our concrete at a 45 and then using that rock. They've already brought some rock in to beef the road up a little bit and...
Yeah, 'cause after they go through about 100 loads, they better...
Yes, but it's already end of probably 10 or 15 loads that was delivered. It's already getting some ruts out there and that's at the end of where they do their disc throwing at for track stuff. So we're trying to keep that area, trying to leave them a limited driveway. So, and they're working well so far.
Yeah, I mean, you just can't bring in 200, 300 loads without making some tracks.
Making some damage, right.
That's right.
Eastern Elementary Pod 1 through 3 enclosure. MHA's actually sent us the contract today. We did receive it electronically. We have tasked in before it to our attorney, Mr. Rod Malone, for review and we hope to have it back in the next few days for y'all's final signature. They sent Dr. Phillips an email explaining why it had been drawed out from what they originally told us because they wanted to go through the AIA contract, the same agreement as was required in the other project at Eastern.
And we have Rod from Tharantin Smith look at the contracts and that may cost us a few days, but we feel like it's better to do that and make sure that we've got everything covered there from the legal standpoint.
Yep. We don't need to be in something we don't need to be in.
Over the past two weeks, I've met with various contractors in regards to our capital projects. We have 19 capital projects that's due today at 5, or it was due at 5:00 PM. We're over that time limit, so I hope we got most of those 19 projects in. And Southside Couplin, as I reported last time, are scheduled, still scheduled for September the 20th to start that project. Any questions about projects in progress? Completed projects, PS Jones concession stand. Their punch list is complete. The final accounting process is, we got the final billing in yesterday and there's been no change orders and it should complete out and final out as the contracted amount of $78,832 as contract.
Are they using it or...
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. In use. Had a few little tweaks, some doors and little things. Got a faucet that was dripping and they've been back, they've been very good to correct the issues. It's just...
It looks great.
I'm sure they're very pleased.
Yeah, they love it. PS Jones Expansion Joint Project has complete, has been completed. There was no change orders on that project. Y'all approved $6,912.06 on that project. It was budgeted $12,000 on the capital.
Stan, that was one of the projects you said was a new, a new way of doing things?
Well, we actually, it was still a better way than what we originally had planned. The technology's changed and then we've even found a newer process that's even cheaper than that that we want to try and we're gonna try. One of those in plant operations this summer, we're gonna cut it out and try it. That's that new rubber product that I showed y'all till three meetings ago.
I just said that to say, will you keep us updated there just to make sure that the quality and the life expectancy...
Yeah, that's why we wanted to compare one. I left one at the Jaisit Hall so I can compare apples for apples at the same intersection where traffic is. Compared rubber to the aluminum and see what kind of wire we get out of it. Concrete pads on the exterior corners of Washington High School have been poured. Plant operations will be removing deform boards and completing the final grade and putting the rock back up around them, but those, all those corners, 27 of them total at that school. The rock that y'all approved, previous meeting for Washington High School and PS Jones Field House and concession stand, they have been delivered last Thursday and were graded out Friday. Big difference there. Any questions about completed projects?
Northside concession stand, did you mention that?
Oh, skip that one, I'm sorry. Northside concession stand is complete. We've got our final CO and it's been added to our insurance, so that was sent in.
And they're hoping to use that.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, they, I mean, the carpentry shop's still planning to build them some shelves, but it's not part of the actual building, some actual usability stuff of it, but that's still in progress.
Good. And pictures were in the paper today.
Yeah, I saw that.
And I saw Butch and Mark. So thanks, guys, for showing up for that. I was unable to be there, but we had some representation, so.
Any other questions?
Nope. What's this action item?
We actually have two. We have a second one that's will be, I'll discuss in a second. The first item is the purchase and approval of funding for 650 stackable chairs and six dollies for the new multipurpose building at Eastern Elementary. These chairs can be purchased under state contract 420B with delivery and tax. Everything included is $24,810.96. And if approved, they will be purchased through Brings Specialty Company. That's who handles the state contract. We did receive bids on it and our state contract was under the bids that we received.
Because that was an item we were really thinking more in the line of 35,000.
Correct. And by under state contract, it really saved us a bunch of money.
Is that stackable chairs like these?
Identical to these. We just need to choose the fabric. Same chair.
We need to choose the fabric.
Yeah. Well, the school, we can let the school just decide.
What do you think about that? That thing. Yeah, I think that's a...
Well, depends on what the board thinks. I think it's a better idea to let them pick the fabric and the colors they want.
Pick the school color closest we can.
That's what they would do. And I know 650 is what we said. Is that where we're still staying? I mean, that's what we figured would work or is that the capacity?
That's basically what they figure will sit on the floor. That's why the floor design and our layout in the gym and still leave room for some production or whatever they do at the front for graduation, this type of stuff.
Well, any questions about that? Because I don't think it's gonna do us a lot of good without some chairs.
Funding source is what.
Move approval.
Well, funding would be the fund balance, I'm sure, but capital.
You'll have to take, you'll have to do an approval for budget amendment without capital.
Okay. Can we do it all in one motion here or, I mean, you're saying, we'll just, we'll just make the motion to include that it comes out of capital, fund balance. Okay.
Did you see it right, Matt?
Yeah, that's what I just said.
There you go. Any questions?
That's what I heard.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Can you oppose? There you go.
And we have one item that was added. It's a capital. It was bid number 16. It was added. It came in late this afternoon and our Fips wanted to get it put in. We get approval and that's the, it's approved 1516 and it's in budget. It's gonna be awarded to GW Walker for the replacement of the carpet in the media center at Northeast Elementary. And that's for $11,000 even.
And that...
And that was the last minute. I would've put it on there, but it was the last minute thrown in.
It was already included on the...
Yes, sir. It's already money in, in capital.
We have a budget for that.
What was the budget amount for that?
I don't have it.
13, I think.
I have it here somewhere. I don't think everybody wants me to wait and look it up. But it was within the...
I'm, Ms. Lisa, you just had it right. I just saw it in your file.
That's 60.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I saw it.
Well, we're saving on the chair, so that's fine. We'll just go with this.
I, I think, Ms. Lisa, I will recuse myself from that.
You think that's what you might need to do. Not a problem.
Are you waiting for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Move. Okay, second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any last questions?
No.
If not, all in favor, say aye. Can you oppose to that? Okay. Thank you, Stan.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Now we're back to the good stuff from last night. Local current expense. Don.
What I'm seeking tonight is just approval from you all for our local current expense budget, which will be $14,567,018. That would be a combination of county appropriation, fines and forfeitures and that would be the request that we would make with details provided at the joint meeting that we have on the 27th.
She's, she had the right file.
Yeah, we had, what was not, what was not in the number last night was the $100 supplement increase that the commissioners wanted us to add in. So that, put that in as a line item. We should increase that amount by, by 55,000.
So that's the adjusted budget, okay. Is that what that is?
Yes.
About what? Not quite halfway down as where he added in the supplement. You'll see that at 55, 600.
Yeah. Everything else is exactly what we saw last night.
Which matches last year, I believe, right?
It does.
Okay. So this is what we talked about last night. Any last questions about it? If not, we can entertain a motion.
So move.
Okay, we got a motion. Got a second. All in favor, say aye. Can you oppose to that? Okay. I think we're fairly well set for our meeting now, correct? Yes, everything's covered. We're almost. Summer hours.
I'd like to request that we do what we've done the last couple of years that have worked out for us was a four-day work week in the summer, longer Monday through Thursday, no school operation on Friday. And we'd like to continue to do that this year. It would pick up the week after students are out and would wrap up before they come back.
May I chip in?
Sir.
Okay. We'll make that an easy end. Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose to that? Okay. Backing up one notch if I could. Lisa found the numbers and the 11,000 that we just approved had a budget of 12,000. So we're within.
Say the money again.
That's one more thousand forty.
That's another thousand. There you go. Appointment of the, to the board trustees and somebody may know more, even though the letter says it's got my name over here, somebody may know more about it than I do, Don.
Captain Tansy and Laura Statton, the chair for the board of trustees, have requested that we continue the appointment of Mr. Cornell McGee. And I like, and I like to read what's written here. Mr. McGill has been on the property committee since 2008, '09. The committee has been critical in the maintenance, upgrading and expansion of the college. He's been, become an expert in terms of college operations and it's essential that they continue to have him there as they proceed with their building expansion. He's also served as the board chair for three years, the chair of the curriculum education program for three years, vice chair of the same committee for one year, vice chair of the personnel committee for one year and a member of the personnel, property and curriculum education committees. Very active, very positive member and they would like to have him continue with your permission.
I absolutely need that we approve that.
I think this is a well-deserved appointment. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions anybody would like to ask? If not, all in favor, say aye. Can you oppose to that? Okay, it's back. And that'll carry us to closed session if someone...
I need that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11 to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115C-321 and student records under General Statute 115C-402 and 20 U.S. Code 1232G.
Okay, that was a lot.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Go into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose to that? Okay, we're in closed session.
Okay, we're back in open session and the first item up is personnel agenda that was just discussed. If I can get a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose to that? Okay, we're moving into updates and we're looking at a calendar update.
We have a meeting next Wednesday, which will be our annual joint meeting with the commissioners. We'll present our budget request. That'll be at noon, lunch meeting.
Here.
Here. And then we have two dates, our regular scheduled dates in May. There was some discussion about changing those and I'm not sure if there's been any more discussion on a different date or we're gonna leave those where they are.
Who, I mean, I said something about one, but before I do...
Mr. Gis, Mr. Gisbel had a...
Well, the third is probably for me, but I...
Is it all day a problem or the time?
Today. I mean, I, I'll be out of, out of banks. I could get back probably by Thursday of that week, but the following week would work better for me.
Could we do, Monday's difficult, but could we do an earlier Wednesday?
Mondays aren't good for that.
What about Wednesday, May the 4th? But do you have, do you...
Monday, May the 4th?
No, Wednesday.
I mean, Wednesday. Wednesday, I mean, it's fine with me, but I mean, what's the rest of the group? If it's a work session, we probably can get...
I could come back Tuesday evening with my daughter.
Yeah.
But I can make...
What time you wanna do it? 4 o'clock?
You could do a Wednesday.
You wanna do a Wednesday at 4 o'clock? Is that too early? Or 5 better for you guys? Which, which Butch?
5.
5 is a little better for me, too.
Okay. Wednesday, the 4th at 5.
Okay.
And not do the 3rd?
Not do the 3rd.
And keep the 17th?
Yeah, we can just keep that. I probably can't make it, but I think I know somebody can do it.
Thank you. That'll work, that'll work out.
What's the 17th?
It's our regular 5:30. We're just gonna leave it. I was the one questioning it, but right now, just leave it and I don't have to attend every meeting. You guys can...
Well, can you be on the 18th?
The 18th?
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you want to wait till it's closer, I mean, I'm not asking you to have them at that point.
Might as well talk about it now.
Yeah, I can do the 18th.
Well, go ahead and let's do it, do you?
I mean, it's a group on the...
Do we have another meeting on the 18th, Matt?
Yes, we do. I forgot.
Wait, what time is your meeting?
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. I forgot.
Let's, let's just talk about on the 4th.
We can do that. Yeah, we can talk about it later.
Yeah, we'll just do that.
We're good. Okay. Any other calendar updates? All right. Board member updates. Anyone have anything they'd like to share?
I just want to take another opportunity to thank Butch Oliver for being there last night at the family night in Spinning Tunes. It was absolutely enjoyable to watch a bunch of four, five and six-year-olds as well as some older siblings. They had the best time and the giggles and the laughter and I didn't see any, any hiccups or anything. It was just, and I thank you. Butch did a really good job.
And I got there just a little bit late, so I missed the nay-nay stuff. So if you want to show it... want to show us that, I've got it. I'll play it for you today.
Yes. They were whipping the nae-nae. It was cute.
Well, I'd, I'd like to thank Eastern for inviting me to, to be a part of it. It was, it was a great night. The weather was perfect. The only, the only problem I saw we had is the sun just wouldn't go down quite early enough, so we had, had to delay the movie a few minutes, but, you know, there was a great crowd out there. I think everybody got along well. The place was, it was, when we drove off last night, it was clean. It looked, I mean, it really looked great. It was, I, I, the Jennifer said they were talking about doing it again, maybe in the fall, so I'm looking forward to it. I think it's, I think it's great. I'd, I'd like to see the school giving back to the community. That's great.
When I grew up and I saw the blankets and the picnic baskets and the families, it just, it really was...
Got to be careful with nae-nae until you'll throw a shoulder out.
Superintendent up next. A couple of things I want to share. Stephen out is this week. It's Friday at the Performing Arts Center at Washington High School. Program begins at 6:30. Doors open at 5:45. If you've never been, check it out. If you've been, you know how great it is, and we know you'll be bad. Testing starts to kick into play for us in May. Want to just remind all of the parents and guardians to please make sure students are getting well rested, and they're on school, at school, on time, and, and we look for a good testing season this year. Had the opportunity last Friday, as our board knows, to attend a press conference in Wilmington, and I was part of the group that unveiled the updated version of our blueprint for public education. It's actually called the North Carolina Guide to Strengthening Our Public Schools, and it's based on six goals, and would invite you, we've got it linked on our website now. It involves prepared graduates, assessment, instructional delivery, digital learning, human capital, and funding public education. And we have some strategies and goals there that we want to try to hit, and that was carried across the state and through various media outlets. They also did one in Raleigh, in Charlotte area, and I think, and the Asheville area, so they were going to do four of those around the state. Strategic plan, we continue to work on. It's taken a bit of a backseat because of the budget work, but we're going to try to bring everything back out and get all of that wrapped up by the month of May. And then you all are aware of the court ruling this week of restoring or honoring tenure for those who had, have tenure in North Carolina public schools. They will continue to have tenure unless they move and go to a different school system, and those who have not earned it at this point will not have that opportunity. So, just want to give you that update in terms of tenure in our state.
And tomorrow, we will have some legislators in our high school, and it actually has a name for the day. Do you remember, Lisa, what we call it? Except, I guess it's Legislator Day, and I'll be meeting them there south. Try to be nice and not say anything I regret.
Please don't.
Good luck.
I may ask for money, but I don't know. Yes, from 10 to 1.
You can ask for money, don't worry.
Right. Anybody have anything else they'd like to share? If not...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.